Okay, it is officially, I'll call the May 27th, 2017.
Or May 23rd.
Or, May 23rd, excuse me.
That'd be okay.
I'm reading, saying one thing. You see what kind of day I've had. I'm calling the May 23rd, 2017, Virgin City Council's meeting to order. Turn off my pager so that we won't listen to that. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall that we stand one nation, un�bowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We have a lot to make happen. So, we'll get right into it. The visitors, part of the crew is here. We're going to hold off on them until Cheryl arrives. So, whoops, excuse me. I have to back up a little bit before we get too far. Does anybody have any agendas to the city council agenda? Agenda amendments, excuse me. I'm having one of those bad days.
I don't know that there's any action taken, but...
And there's not a quorum?
I just wanted to make sure you didn't want to add that. We don't need to talk about this stuff.
I can add it as a note to mine. So that the information gets out. Just so everybody knows what's going on, I'll tell you down there.
Okay.
In my area. So, the only other adjustment that I did to the agenda is I've asked Linda, instead of being up in the visitors, to move her down into the business section and create an "L." The reason being is the city needs to approve what they, the Rotary wants to do, and we really need to take that action first before we get too far down the road. So, and there's some other side effects. So, Lynn agreed that that was a good thing, and when we get to that point, any presentation Lynn will offer at that time. Any other changes in the agenda? If not, does anybody need to disclose on any items on the agenda?
Matt or I do.
Okay. We won't, okay, then we don't have enough to make any sort of decisions, but it will be, Matt could...
What's Matt?
On the Harmony Park. I don't think...
Installation. I don't know how much of a conflict that is.
I don't think that's a conflict. The only thing is, and we would still have enough to, if we decided to take action on that tonight, I don't think it would interfere.
Okay.
No, 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 not an issue. So, I don't think it's an issue at this point, but we'll discuss it more when we get down at that level. Next thing is approval of the city council meetings for May 9th, 2017. Lowell's not here. He usually does that. Who's going to step up to the plate?
Motion to approve the minutes of May 9th.
Okay. Rennie made the motion. Can I have a second?
I can second.
Mark gets to second it. Any omissions, errors? Questions?
I actually want to request a clarification. You know, obviously, you know, Joan prepares the minutes, you know. I review them, we go through them, and then eventually you get them. And anyway, I'm sensing that there may be some potential confusion under the citizen comments, the Harmony Park project, and maybe these minutes are fine. The last sentence is, you know, "They will be installed and ready for use." This is really what I believe is, it's not in quotes, but it's, hopefully, it's Lynn's comments. And, you know, "They will be installed and ready for use July 4th at the park that is located on property owned by Green Mountain Power adjacent to Virgin Falls Park," she advised. Now, I don't know the exact situation here, but let me just tell you that when Lynn has talked about being on the right-hand side of the road, I don't know if she said Green Mountain Power, or I just assumed that it was on the right-hand side of the road, and the right-hand side of the road is land owned by Green Mountain Power. However, if she was talking about a site to the right of the parking lot, then that's not on land of Green Mountain Power, but rather land of the city. So, I just want to disclose that there is some confusion, and I don't criticize Joan, but Joan's notes didn't have enough...
I gave the description. Lynn said they will be installed and ready for use before July 4th.
Well, that's, I know, that's what she said. It's more about loc, I'm really concerned about location.
I'm the one that added "at" the park. I'm the one that's given the location.
Okay. Lynn and I had some discussion on the phone this afternoon, if I may help you, and it is neither. Okay?
Okay.
And that's why we need to, first off, approve that it can go there, but as far as the minutes go, it's within the limits of Falls Park on city property. So, if you can make that, if Lynn is accepted...
If that's what she said, I'm absolutely fine, as long as it, you know...
I don't think I said it was on Green Mountain.
No, you did. You did.
Okay.
So, it's on property owned by the city?
Yes.
Adjacent to the...
No, no, well, it doesn't need to say owned by the city. Virgin Falls Park is owned by the city. So, it should, just says, you know, property...
At Falls Park.
Property at Virgin Falls Park, she advised. So, get rid of "owned by Green Mountain Power adjacent to."
Yep, okay.
And then insert "at," right, Mark?
I would just say located at Virgin Falls Park.
Okay.
Get rid of most of that line.
Okay.
And again, I, and this is just semantics, but I think I said that "could be" in as early as July 4th. But obviously, for many reasons, that's not going to happen now. And this, you know, they will be installed. I don't want people to think they will be installed on July 4th, because that's not going to happen now.
Okay. So, the "will" should be "could."
Should be "could," yeah.
Okay?
Okay. I got them all.
Okay. So, Rennie.
Ready? Yeah, in the paragraph that's labeled "video," first sentence, it says, "Virgin's Partnership President Rennie Perry showed a brief video entitled 'A New Virgin's' to its first public audience." And I think that, in order to clarify that, it should say, "Virgin's Partnership President Rennie Perry showed striking out a brief video entitled..." And starting there at "the new video," the new, sorry, "The New Virgin's Video." So, it would, the whole sentence would say, "Virgin's Partnership President Rennie Perry showed The New Virgin's Video to its first public audience."
Okay, I got it.
Any other changes?
I've got two minor tweaks. The second line of the very beginning, "Pledge of Allegiance," should be capitalized. And in grass clippings, front porch form, should be capitalized.
Okay.
That was it.
Mark, Jeff would be proud.
I know. I thought of him. I was channeling.
No, you're not challenged. You're good.
No, channeling.
Oh, okay.
It's making me feel like he's here.
All right. Any other corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? So carried? Okay, let me get back to my agenda. All right. The next thing, any discussion on the warrants? Hearing none? All those in favor passing these, sign them and pass it on, and you've already done that. So, we're missing two, but we have enough. Okay. The next area is item number four, and that's citizens' comments. But just to let you know, any citizens' comments that are made are just that, we cannot, because it has not been added to the agenda, we cannot take any sort of action on it. So, I will now open it up to anyone that would like to, citizen that would like, or visitor that would like to add any sort of comment. I think Shannon is here to speak.
No, not I, not you, other Shannon.
No, not the other Shannon, the other Shannon. Shannon, behind you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, um, I'm here, we had a... Um, it's been last week that I was involved in this, it was really difficult for me. I was a little boy, just hit by a car, and...
Take your time. I'm a firefighter, and I know what it is to take and get involved with children. The level goes 10 times, and the emotions just go out of control. And we do our best to make sure that the children are taken care of.
Right. Well, my husband heard the accident and just screamed, "Call 911." And without even thinking, I grabbed my phone, ran out of the store, across the park to Park Street, and found the scene where one of the mothers had picked up her son, Jensen, and was trying to put him in the car. The other mother was crying hysterically. They were in shock. And as I'm talking to dispatch, trying to figure out what's going on, I'm asking her to put her son down. We know he's been hit by a car, but we don't know how bad it is. He actually, the car actually went over him. And as I convinced her to put him down, we see his leg has a huge hole on the front lower part, and there's bone and blood everywhere. I take my sweater, I wrap his leg. We're all frantic, and at this point, it's been maybe three minutes, and the first rescue car arrives. I get the other cars off of Park Street, back on to Main Street as the police arrive. This incident, you know, and I talked to the police about what actually happened. I was there helping them get Jensen and his mother Heidi into the ambulance, and then I helped Rebecca take their dog Chase to Comfort Hill to board the dog while they went to the hospital to care for their son. They were visiting from Saratoga Springs. They stopped in Virgin's because it's a perfect place to stop on your way to Burlington or Essex. They went in to play in the park with their dog. And though this might not be a direct pedestrian safety incident, you know, there weren't crosswalks involved, it does raise those questions, and it brings that conversation back to the surface. And when I talk to people about what happened, they are surprised that something like that happened on Park Street. They say, "Oh, I expect it on Main Street." To expect it anywhere is a problem. And for me, having to go through that and being a mother of my own daughter, I have woken up every night with her in that place. And we live on the back of the park, and I walk that street every day, at least twice. We don't have a sidewalk on our street. There's no pedestrian crosswalk or stop sign preventing the traffic from coming into us. It's just not, it's not ideal. When we first moved to this town, two years ago, we would tell people that, you know, Riley can walk to school through high school here, but the reality is she can't. You know, we don't have a sidewalk that gives her safe access to the elementary school or the preschool or the high school. We're in a zone where there are no sidewalks, and there are no stop signs, and there are no posted speed limit signs. So, I'm here to ask you to put this back in the agenda, to address and look at pedestrian safety throughout Virgin's. Mine is not the only part of this town. We're a very small city in a condensed area. Every street has issues. Every street has broken sidewalks. They don't have access. They don't have speed limit signs. They don't have the proper crosswalk signals. And I know it's expensive, and I know it's a long haul, but it has to start somewhere, and it needs to start. As a business owner in this town, and a landowner in this town, and a family member of this town, I love Virgin's. I've invested everything I have in this town, but if I continue to feel unsafe and I feel like this is going to happen again, I will uproot and leave and take my business with me. Because it's not worth it to have this fear.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate, and thank you so much for what you did. I know that was probably very traumatic. I just wanted to say that there have been many occasions where I have tried to cross from going to the Bixby over to the other side of Main Street, where everywhere is, and have had to stand in the crosswalk, not literally into traffic, but in the crosswalk and wait for many cars to go back and forth, none of them noticing me, even though I'm in the designated crosswalk area. I had found the same thing happening by the city hall, where there is that curve there, and then you have the crosswalk. I know that, again, it is an expense for the town, the city, but it is really something that I think also should be put back on the agenda to be discussed. I would suggest that there is a really great pedestrian signal unit, that if you are ever in downtown Burlington, especially on Pine Street over by where Dealer.com is, I believe that they probably had a big hand in putting them in, but the pedestrian has to actually push a button for these flashing signals to happen. And people stop immediately.
Well, Virgin's has been working with the, what is it, local motion?
Local motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
To design those, and they've been sort of, that's what they recommended, is four of those throughout Virgin's as a starting point.
Oh, okay.
Because the one at the city hall is obstructed by trees and by the bus anytime it's parked there, the one that's southbound or the westbound. All of the crosswalks are problematic.
Thank you.
And the sidewalks are problematic. And there's Complete Streets, which was a guide created in Vermont in 2011. It's a great guide. If you want to come by the store, I'll give you a copy. I can print out a dozen of them, and we can have dialogue about it. I will do everything in my power to help. I want to be a part of this community. I want to see it grow. I want to see my daughter grow up here and put roots down as well and take over the business someday. But I can't do that unless we move forward with making it a safer place, you know? I mean, the economy in this town is finally back to where it was before my sister had to shut down the Fat Hen, you know? So, now we're back to a stable place where we can grow forward. And Vermont tourism is putting in, it's in 251, to bring hundreds of thousands of dollars to towns like ours, to bring them forward, to bring more people here, you know? And if we build our infrastructure up, better sidewalks, increase property values on streets, and that's more tax money that we get to spend on more infrastructure. So, there's all of these steps that can happen. They can take us to the next level. But we have to start. We have to have that on the agenda.
When is our other word, budget?
Next meeting?
I think it's SURE first, and then all general fund items, so that's what I think it is. Certainly June.
That's where that have to...
Yeah. I mean, and there's, you know, there's also other, you know, it isn't just the budget, you know? If you're talking about a real large project, it could take a bond to pay for, I mean, if, because, you know, there is only a certain amount of dollars in the operating budget, you know, every penny on the tax rate raises about $22,000. So, you know, I can...
But the idea is that, like, infrastructure changes, the natural gas lines, it can be part of that budget. Because we're already ripping up the sidewalks, and we just make them better, and we have that be part of the project. And that's all outlined in the guide, the ways to put it into the normal changes and construction and maintenance that go on throughout the town and the community. And just like hired hand, they needed a new sidewalk, and it happens, you know? And now it's better, and it's up to the code of what Vermont wants all of the sidewalks to be, are single lane, two feet wide sidewalks. I can't walk down the sidewalk on Park Street with my family, because we have to walk single file, and I need to hold my daughter's hand, but there's not room enough for us to stand side by side on the sidewalk. Same thing on Water Street. You can't walk side by side. One of you has to be in the street. And so, is, you know, we can do it. We can do it creatively. We can raise money for it, the same way that we have fundraisers for schools and libraries. We can have fundraisers to better our streets and our community if it's not in the budget. But we just need to get proactive about it.
Mel and I are going to talk, and I'm going to talk with Matt, see about resurrecting the group that was...
Task force.
Task force, and see what we can start doing. And Mark, you were there as well. So, we'll have a separate conversation, because I can't, we can't start discussing at this point.
No, I understand. The mic was open.
But, no, I have, I clearly hear what you said. I've done a lot of investigation on what happened, is speed, this, that, and the other, and there's a lot of people that are concerned from both sides about, you know, our speed limit in some cases is too low, others too high. I have a little bit of a joke, I try to teach, or teach, I want to say something later on at the end, that I want to use a little funny to make it, but it's very serious what's going to happen in the future here. So, I'm saving that for my punchline for later. So, that's to try to keep you here.
Yeah. Just a few comments. One of the things, when you were describing, when you were describing, I believe you were talking about the intersection of Main Street and Green Street at the signalized intersection, and I'm certainly not, I'm not here to embarrass you, but yield to pedestrian does not apply at a signalized intersection. That's the law, all right? But...
I think she was talking about Maple Street.
Well, I thought, I was asking about green and main. So, anyway...
No, no.
Okay. So, just so that folks know, that's the rule, is that on a signalized intersection, the yield to pedestrian does not apply. That's the law. But they really should be, should be yielding everywhere else. Chief Merkel is actually on vacation. Would have liked to have had him been here tonight to hear, to hear some of this. Jason Detective Sergeant Willat had another engagement, couldn't make it here tonight either, but certainly will pass it on. I will tell you that we are in pursuit of a highway safety grant to fund an officer. We think that, that the area in the center of town, if you will, I mean, you all, you all know where the police are, you know, they, you know, the strategy is the police are more on the outskirts of town, and that's to slow people down before they get to the center of town, all right? But that being said, when you're, when you're doing speed enforcement out at the outskirts of town, you're not doing yield to pedestrian enforcement in the center of town. So, one of the things that George really agrees is that more time needs to be spent in the, in the center of town where there are people trying to get through traffic and have a no tolerance policy, people are going to get tickets. If you don't yield, you get a ticket. You know, we don't have some published leeway, but the speed limit in the center of town is 25 miles an hour. We would all have our own opinion about what is a ticketable offense, and I can tell you there really, it shouldn't be too much over 25, all right? And on the note of 25, I just want to let you know, you remarked about how lots of streets don't have speed limit signs, and let me just tell you that that is absolutely on purpose, and let me explain to you why. Is because on Park Street, as an example, under Vermont law, the lowest speed limit that a municipality can adopt by ordinance is 25. You do not want a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign on Park Street, because 25 is too fast, okay? So, so there really act, there really is a strategy about, about the speed limit signs. All of our speed limits are set by ordinance. There may be some areas in town, there was a time where the entire town was 30 miles an hour. City went through a speed, there's a study that's required, and there's a fair amount of the city that was reduced to 25. That's the lowest that it can be by law, even, even though, you know, I can see how, do we wish that people didn't go faster than 20? The answer is yes, but, but the law doesn't allow us to do that. So, there is some strat, some strategy that we have. You know, relative fact that there's sections of North Street with no sidewalk, yeah, that's, you know, that is ironic. You know, I remember when it was a dirt road, but, so somewhere along the way, they paved it. But, you know, to me, you know, I mean, Shannon's here, I can tell you, the planning commission, the task force, we look at those types of things, you know, where, because there isn't unlimited funds, where do we get the biggest bang for the buck? To be very honest with you, to my knowledge, I never heard, you know, and I'm not, I don't know that that, the thought of no sidewalk on that short stretch, or no sidewalk on North Street, there is a little bit down on that one end, but there, there is no sidewalk there. And it's just kind of funny that I don't recall ever anybody talking about, about that, you know?
Well, North Street's become more and more of a cluster for traffic as well, to get out, you know, sort of get down to one way out and one way in. Everybody uses it. There's no stop signs along the way. It's very easy, but there's a lot of families that now live there. There's the senior citizen home there as well, and there's lots of people that want to cross into the park, but there's no pedestrian crosswalks over on that side of the park. There's no stop signs. There's no protection.
There's a stop sign that comes off of North by the park.
There's the one at the end of Park Street when it gets to North.
But not...
No, 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 sorry. There's one on North Street.
North when it gets to North.
North when it gets to North and Park, but Park, so you have those two streets that come together, and neither one has to stop. And then there's the four-way with a yield sign coming up the hill on North Street, but the other three roads don't have any indication of what they're supposed to do, and you have a blind area when you're on North Street because of the parallel, or the diagonally parked cars on Green Street. So, it's always a challenge.
That will be part of the task force's responsibility, to review where and how our signage is.
Yeah.
We'll ask them to look at that and see what we can do for quick changes, and then see what we need to do towards budget changes or funding, so. But I just can't let this one go, because, you know, it is sad that the person got hit, and I feel bad. I even spoke to the driver that was involved today to make sure that they were doing well. But just to let everybody know, out there in TV land, Virgin's Police Department's going to have a tea party. Everybody is invited. If you get caught speeding, you will get fined. Tea. Targeted enforcement area. You're all invited. Thank you. So, anything else, Shannon? Or anyone else in the audience that would like to offer anything?
No, I'll just, I'll be back every time to remind you.
No, thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for speaking out. No matter what the message is, it's always good to see the seats full. It is to show interest in coming to a city council meeting. Sometimes we can get a little bit quiet here, but we like things to shake, shake things up. Okay. If there's no other comments at this time, we're still going to wait for Cheryl. We're going to go on to business section. I'll close that, that portion and go to business, and we're going to go to taxi license for Nicholas Shieldrop. How'd he do? Okay. Any questions on that license application?
My husband said that Nicholas was to submit his driver's license, his car insurance, his car registration. This would actually be a renewal of his continuous licenses? He's been licensed at least three years with us previously.
I'll make the motion to approve the license.
He made the motion. Did I have a second? And Matt seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vermont, our vendor license, CJ Hollers. I don't know if you want to wait till they do their presentation, or if you're ready, you want us to go ahead with our, go with, that way if there's any questions, but it's up to you. If you want to move it at this point?
There are questions anyways.
Okay. We'll delay you then and tie it together. I think it'll go better, it'll fit. Item number C, special event permit, Stonecutter Spirits. Can I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to grant the permit.
Okay, we have a motion, and do I have a second? Mark, second. Open for discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was an aye. Uh, okay, all right, uh, special events, that's done. Uh, D, catering license, R. Inadote. Um, let's make sure I get the right one. All right, that's that one. Um, can I have a, a motion on that?
I probably should not make the motion.
Rennie's gonna abstain. Matt made the motion, uh, and Mark seconded it. Um, any discussion on what this is about? You read it? You need more information?
Just need to make a comment.
Go ahead, make your comment.
Um, it's not really totally related to the, to the license as much as, uh, the partnership decided to have its annual meeting in, um, in Falls Park this year, first time that we've ever done it outdoors, and the reason for Falls Park is because we wanted to highlight the park and get some people down there to see what has been done, uh, and find out what, um, may be done in the future. Um, and particularly since the Virgin's partnership, if you look at the downtown basin master plan, the Virgin's partnership has a lot of responsibility towards seeing that those things get done, so we thought it would just be appropriate to have it down there. And everybody's invited.
And I would disclose that I've been asked to speak at the event, but it will not impact my decision in any way. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And Rennie's gonna abstain?
Oh, that's right, I should abstain, you're right.
Rennie's abstaining, so the ayes have it, that moves forward. Um, item number E, um, Virgin's Farmers Market. Chris, anybody, or Mel, you wanna start?
Well, I put this on the, on the agenda, 'cause I just wanted it to come back to the city council at the, there was a, you know, Chris, uh, came to a meeting earlier talking about the farmers market moving to Kennedy Brothers, and, and I don't know how many email exchanges he and Chris and I have had, but I was actually trying to, to hone in on, on this proposal, and it gets a little complicated with land ownership over there, because the city, you know, has the old right-of-way that, uh, used to connect with Meg's Road, and then, of course, we have a public land license with Kennedy Brothers that has a very specified area, and then there's a little bit of no man's land, if you will, uh, in between what Kennedy Brothers owns, and what Kennedy Brothers is under their public land license, and what Country Home Products, uh, leases from Vermont Railway, so there's a little bit of, um, there's a chunk in the middle there that really is, I don't, it's not, it's not that it's unaccounted for, but it's still part of the city right-of-way, all right? So, I just wanted to bring this back to the, to the city and, and let you know that I communicated with Country Home Products, because one of the things is if they're gonna use a portion of the public land lease, and if they're gonna use a portion of the right-of-way that has not been transferred out by the city, I wanted to make sure that Country Home Products was absolutely comfortable, and so I have an email here from Jeremy Brooks, who is the store manager, and he just wants to make sure that the gravel portion, um, I mean, you've seen the email, Chris, that the gravel portion, that is to the north of the paved area, which will be occupied by vendors, is kept clear for their deliveries, and so I just wanna make sure that, 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 Chris, that, that you're aware of that, and it's your job to make sure, that, that's not my job to make sure that, that your customers are in the, and vendors are in the right spot, it's your job to be responsible for that, so I'm gonna, um, just make that clear. Kennedy Brothers, I communicated with Bob, I just wanted to make sure that he, he owned, he's the president of Kennedy Brothers, and I really don't know what kind of communication has been gone on with his tenants, that's between Bob and his tenants, uh, but Bob, uh, the, Bob didn't like the original, the original layout, 'cause I think it, he felt that it did have a little bit too much impact on, on the existing tenants over there, and Bob has signed off on the, uh, of the latest version. So, I, uh, I have a public assemblage permit, because Kennedy Brothers has a development review board permit to, to have Shaksberry Cider, have the retail, have the restaurants over there. They do not have DRB approval for this kind of outdoor activity, and so the only way to handle that is through a public assemblage permit, and I just wanna let you know that unless I hear objections from the city council, it is my intent to grant this public assemblage permit tomorrow, uh, covering every, whatever day of the week it is, every Thursday from June first to October fifth. So, I just wanna let you be aware of that, 'cause if you're, the objections tomorrow at ten o'clock will be too late.
Do, do we need a straw vote or a motion? What do you, what do you want, Mel?
Well, I, all I'm saying, I mean, 'cause really, part of this, you know, part of this is, I mean, I typically approve public assemblage permits on property, on property that's not permitted. I don't, uh, you know, I don't normally deal with streets and whatever, so, you know, unless there's, if there's no objections, you know-
Any objections, Matt? Mark? Lynn? Rennie? Mike? No.
Okay, so, I'll issue that in the morning.
Questions?
Assuming that this all goes as planned, would it make sense come fall to have a more permanent, like, have DRB consider, rather than doing this again next year, having just a single permit, having the Kennedy Brothers incorporate this into whatever grant plan they have, or having some sort of long-term approval?
Well, you know, you know, I, I don't know that we can force them to get the DRB, I mean, but, 'cause, but typically, if this is gonna be an ongoing use, it really should be run through the DRB. I mean, I, so I would encourage them, encourage Bob, to apply for that, to be a, to be a permit use, so that it's, because once, once it's approved for that use by a DRB, public assemblage doesn't apply.
Right.
The only difference, though, is, is that, what makes us different is a portion of this is not on their property.
Right.
It's, it's on city property, so I don't know, unless we were to possibly consider, uh, revisiting the public land license, that's something that we could, you know, we could do, and that way, if the public land license enlarged the amount of land, uh, then, then it, then they would be able to use that land license with their application, but it's, when the, when the public land license was put together, it really did not contemplate, uh, farmers market, so, and we might have an opportunity to clean it up.
And see what happens-
Right.
-as a pilot study, and then consider it in the fall, what might go longer.
Right. Yeah. Any other comments? So, we'll go.
Okay.
All right? And thank you for that comment, Mark, uh, good, good idea. Um, gonna now turn back to the visitors, and we have Cheryl, Terry, and Don. Uh, I don't know who wants to go first, but thumbs up, let's go.
Take a guess, Mike. So, um, Cheryl, you're rep for the Addison County Solid Waste Banishment Board. Our Board of Directors formed a committee, the Municipal Drop-Off Advisory Committee, with the intent to piece together how Addison County operates, um, how each town or city has their drop-off, how, how that operates, hours, how's it paid for, basically, how does, how does trash and recycling work in Addison County. Second was to make sure municipal drop-offs were, uh, ready for the Act 148 deadlines that, that were kind of stepped in place. The large producers of food waste have already, you know, had to deal with this, but this is for that last piece, which is how municipalities and, um, haulers are going to, um, be able to take care of food scraps, so that was the main reason we got together. We had a July first, two thousand seventeen deadline. At the eleventh hour, that got changed at the legislature to, uh, push it out for one year, but because of our efforts in Addison County, with, uh, our efforts to get ready, we've, um, you know, pretty much have everything in place. The third goal for our committee is to take a look at the future of trash and recycling, and look at Addison County as a whole to see if there was another, um, another, uh, operation or procedure approach to solid waste that we could take. So, we're here tonight for that second reason, which is specifically to talk about food scraps. Um, the district has done a lot of work, our, our staff has been incredible at getting grants and, um, collecting resources to help the different municipalities meet that deadline of collecting food scraps successfully. It's a messy business, it's not straightforward, it hasn't been, um, simply add another, uh, you know, section to your truck, it's, each town has had a different way of, uh, meeting this new deadline. Um, and just like some people with numbers, I could talk trash for a long time, so, um-
[laughing]
So, I, I think Terry Kuzinski, our district manager, would probably be able to address the, the various options and resources that we've gathered for our municipality, and I'm very happy that, uh, we have Christie and Joe here tonight to, uh, add their voice, because this is definitely taking a village to accomplish this goal for Addison County.
Hi. It's good to see you again. As Cheryl was saying, there is a law called Act 148 that you're probably familiar with that has had extended deadlines going through year after year, beginning with having to put the recycling container next to every trash container in public places. I know that you complied with that, and, ahead of schedule. Um, another one was mandatory recycling kicked in in two thousand fifteen, done, we were already doing that. Um, pay-as-you-throw, unit-based pricing was another mandate that we've been using since nineteen ninety-three. So, really, our challenge was leaf-in yard waste, which kicked in last year, and now food scraps. In addition, we've been working with businesses who are now beginning to fall within a threshold that they have to separate their food scraps, and that started this year with the, um, larger generator, or last year with the larger generators, and it went down to the next level, which was a half a ton a week generation. And as of July one, it's going to a third a ton food waste generation, and that is going to include a lot of new businesses that formerly weren't part of that. They have to take it to a certified compost facility or an anti-rhubarb digestion facility, and we've worked for many years now with Vermont Natural Egg Products, just a half a mile away from us around the corner, um, to accept the food waste from commercial haulers and from businesses. They're all set, we even assisted them in obtaining a grant, a fifty thousand dollar grant. They matched that with two other grants to create the infrastructure to expand in order to improve their compost facility, the turnaround time for curing the compost, and also expanding the capacity. So, we're very excited about that, we reached all those hurdles, we did all our outreach, we were ready to go July one, we bought the toters that we were going to donate to each drop-off, we, we ordered the buckets, and then the legislature heard, um, from a couple of haulers a few weeks ago, and decided that, um, they would extend the hauler deadline until seven one, two thousand eighteen. So, unfortunately, it kind of helped a few haulers, but it pulled the rug out on several that were already, had already advertised to their customers that they were offering the service, and at our established rate, and, um, we were ready to go, as I say, and now we were wondering, what should our role be? And Thursday's board meeting, they decided that they were going to amend our policies, which is tied to our waste management ordinance, in order to allow for that extension to two thousand eighteen. That will leave, relieve some of the haulers who wanted to have more time to provide curbside collection in rural areas, probably. However, we thought we're this far, we have the money, we've gotten the materials, we've ordered the buckets, we've done the PR, people are asking every day about it, um, we have to be there for the businesses that need the collection and need the facility. So, we thought we would come out, the committee's done many months of work on this, we thought we would continue to come out and meet with the towns, and say, and the city, to say that we are here for you, if you wanna get started, if your hauler is ready to get started. Um, even though the mandate for the hauler to get started has been delayed one year, I think this is a great time to do it, and we can use this experience in order to prepare for when everyone else gets started in two thousand eighteen, and maybe we can tweak it a little bit to see what works better. We also are trying to get ready, ready for a deadline, two thousand twenty, where all households are going to have to separate out their food scraps, and food scraps will be banned from the landfill in Vermont, it's a huge step. I don't think two years is a lot of time to get ready, so this is a good way to get ready. Um, we're really, really proud of our haulers, because we've been meeting with them for several years to talk about this, and they've stepped up to the plate, and, um, they're willing to get going. So, Don is going to talk to you about what we can offer to each of the drop-offs.
Yes, I'll pass this on. Unfortunately, we had a little miscommunication about our handouts, so I only have a few of those, but we'll make sure we get you this, uh, document following.
Is that what you emailed us?
Uh, is that the email?
Yeah.
We have it or have- Okay, great, perfect.
Oh, good, yeah.
So, there's, the sheet that I'm looking at right now is the one that says, uh, drop-off resources, it's got a picture of a toter on the front, I'm not sure if that's also been. Um, basically, the district is gonna be providing two thirty-five gallon toters for each drop-off, and what we'll offer for, to help out the haulers, is a toter swap system. We'll also provide a certified compostable bio-bag liner for the totes, so that the hauler can line the tote, and the food wastes can come out easier as they're being dumped. Uh, we'll provide educational brochures, uh, we already have most of that material created, including stickers for, for the pails and buckets the residents can use. Um, signage, we'll provide metal signage, durable metal signage that's easy to read for all the drop-offs, um, if it's something that you think will work for your location. And then, uh, we'll do our usual amount of advertising to the general public about it, um, once we know who's up and running and what we need for, for ads. So, the, the pails and buckets that we're providing, um, we've always sold the kitchen collector, uh, the Sure Close brand kitchen collector, we've sold that for a number of years now for five dollars, we have a large supply of them at the station, but we'll also be distributing five gallon pails to any household with a lid and, and easy to, to take off lid, uh, for someone that might need to accumulate a larger amount of food scraps and bring them to a drop-off.
They won't say John Deere on them, though.
No, that's just a, this, we've been doing an enormous amount of research on pails, and this was just a sample, uh, but we'll have those that, they're already on order, we'll have those ready, uh, very soon. So, uh, those are just some of the resources, we even have a little, uh, a game that you can use with your residents, if your hauler's willing to do that, um, as well, where they take the little, uh, produce stickers, and if they fill up an entire square, they get some kind of a benefit, maybe a free food waste bucket that the district can reimburse for. Um, ways to, uh, reduce contamination in the food scrap collection, because we wanna make sure our endpoint, Vermont Natural Egg Products, is satisfied with the quality of what we're giving them, so that the program can be successful.
You know, just like when recycling started, the easier you can make it for people, the more successful it will be, which is why, you know, no sort, uh, recycling is working in our state, so our goal is to make it as easy as possible for both the haulers and the individuals who, who want to get rid of their food scraps. Mike?
Is this similar to what they did about, oh, God, date myself? Maybe a minimum of twelve, but not twenty years ago, there was a food collection that was done, and I know they did Foster Brothers, Vermont Brew, and I think Middlebury College was involved, but it was mainly designed for restaurants?
Yes, we collected ourselves in a, in a district truck with a lift gate and toters. I think we had over fifty, maybe fifty-two customers, and, um, it was a pilot project, and I think that because of the nature of the collection type, that it wasn't sustainable, but that was one of the values of doing the, this pilot project, was we realized ergonomically, and also from the standpoint of cleaning the toters, it just wasn't working. So, we have much more experience in the industry in general in Vermont, that we can tap into to, to use something that's more effective. One of the, um, options might be for the hauler to use one of our toters on a trailer, for example, or on their truck, and then people bring their buckets to the drop-off and just dump it into that toter, so there wouldn't be any toter lifting until they got either to Vermont Natural Egg products, or to our transfer station where we would have some kind of lifting device and a tipper, so that they wouldn't have to lift them. So, those toters are around three hundred pounds, two hundred and three-
I know, I helped flip some of those at one time, so, when they were in the previous-
Very heavy.
Yep.
So, the advantage of having a mobile collection system is that you don't have any large toters sitting around for a week on end. That person has to take that away within 48 hours and take it to a facility. So, that's part of the requirement.
Same day.
Yeah, same day. Yeah. So, they can either come to Vermont Natural Egg Products or to our transfer station. People can also direct call to our transfer station. Residents can bring their materials to us if they have a bear problem, for example. We were in, ripped in last night. Of course, they have a lot of bear issues, and one of the things they were excited about was that now they can get rid of their food, the meat and bones that they can't put in their backyard composter, because it attracts the animals. So, now they can put that in their bucket, and it will be composted at Vermont Natural Egg Products, and the processor will get hot enough to destroy pathogens, much better than if it were in a backyard composter. So, this isn't by no means a requirement that you have to bring your food to a drop-off. It's just an option.
If you are composting at home, though, the state does let you throw those few bone scraps into your garbage. There won't be a food scrap police coming to check up.
At this point, but 2020, maybe that will change.
It's never going to be a food scrap police coming to your house.
No, I realize that, but legally.
Legally, that's what they've said is.
Yeah. A and R has said that if you were already composting in your backyard, you're doing enough, and they don't expect you to find a separate system for meat scraps. So, that was made clear to us.
We're trying to have a system in place that you could, if you want. You could throw them in the freezer, and then just occasionally make that trip down to the, to the drop-off. You know, when we started out looking at this, we weren't 100% sure that every hauler was going to be ready when the deadline hit, and we wanted to make sure that we had everybody covered, even if the hauler was not able to, to be ready at that point. But we've actually been surprised that, at the willingness, or what's the word I want? For that, the haulers have been extremely responsive to stepping up to the plate.
I'm just kind of curious, is what is the added expense to the people that are having this service provided?
That's a good point.
Ballpark.
You're allowed to charge for food scraps, the, the collection, as opposed to recycling?
Yep, and there's a decision tree on the back of your handout, which will take you through that and say, do you want to subsidize the food waste, or do you want to have the private hauler collect it and collect the money for it and charge what the private hauler needs to cover his or her costs? And that would be much easier if you did have a private trash hauler collecting the food waste, that they collect the funds for it, and then you wouldn't need a town employee, volunteer, or punch cards. But if anyone wanted to use the district to collect this material, we would go for the punch cards, and we would develop those for the town. So, that's another option. Some of the people are not sure whether they could use it if it's $5, say, a bucket. But others are willing to pay $5 a bucket. So, it all depends on the individual and what their circumstances. An apartment, for example, this might be their only opportunity to, to recycle their food scraps.
So, just like there are different fees for, there's a different charge for a bag of trash, depending on where you go throughout Addison County, from a buck to $5. So, there's going to be that same difference in, in what the haulers will be charging to cover their costs for food scraps as well?
In theory, if they're taking the food scraps out of the garbage bag, that's going to make the garbage bag lighter, so, you know.
No, I'm not challenging.
No, no, but, but that's.
Those are all good statements.
That's a good question, too.
Because that's some of the heavier stuff that you put in your garbage bag is, is your food, and your diapers and your kitty litter would just have to stay in the bag.
The kitty litter is not something that's.
No.
No pet, no pet waste.
And it's also the smelliest portion of your trash that you're removing, so even if your bag is, is, it'll lighten the bag, but it also might make it not necessary to bring a bag of trash every time, if you save your trash for longer, if it's not as smelly. So, that might save the residents some money as well.
Any questions from the council?
Joe, any questions?
So, one thing, just, just to be, just to be clear, based on that sheet right there, just so that folks in the room know, that lots of times we talked about, that, you know, our, our town drop-off facility, and that's not what it is. It's actually a, it's actually a mobile drop-off facility. And so, just want to make sure that people are in the right-hand side of this column. The city, the way that the city has handled its relationship, if you will, with C and J's is through our vendor's license, right or wrong, you know, that's just how it's done. There's no contractual relationship that we have with CJ's. They obtain a vendor's license approved by the city council. We require them to provide proof of liability insurance, because they actually are, they're conducting business on city property, so they provide us with that, with a certificate of insurance. And we have nothing to do with their fee structure or what they do at all. Now, one of the reasons, you know, the reason why I recommended that, that the council only give CJ's a six-month license was because of the law, all right? So, when you get, when you get to CJ's on the agenda, the law was, is no different today than it was when you acted on this before, so, you know, I won't have any, any recommendation other than to grant that. But one of the things I'm, I'm kind of wondering about is whether or not it's voluntary or mandatory. You know, you're going to, you're going to start giving out these buckets, okay? And I don't, you're, will they only be distributed at the transfer station?
That's correct. All of the town of Goshen decided, to my surprise, that they are getting ready to collect it at the curb, and they're buying a trailer, using grant funds from the district to buy that, and they're going to put the toters on there, and they're going to start offering food collection in Goshen, which is really amazing. So, in that instance, we will.
Who's they?
The town.
I have a question on that. You said that they now, can we purchase them from the transfer station and then, and then sell them to the, saving all the people that come to us that want a bucket, saving them the trip to Middlebury?
We are envisioning that the haulers that park at the drop-offs will have a supply.
Okay.
Plus all the outreach materials, and we'll be out there initially to try and get, help people get used to it. And the buckets are at no charge.
No charge.
And we're going to provide them per house, so we're not going to canvass the entire, every house that uses curbside, because for one thing, some of the, because haulers are the ones that wanted an extension. So, we don't see the point in doing that just yet, so we're going to give one per household in the drop-off areas and for the town of Goshen, for their curbside. They don't have to use the buckets either, even though they're free. They can bring their own smaller container. If they feel the buckets are too big for them, they'll never fill them up.
But the, but the question is here is, we'll be giving some to C and J.
So, we'll be able to hand them out to, I just, I don't want to have them come in and ask the question and then tell them, oh, you have to drive to Middlebury to do this. If they want to do it, yes, I want to be able to hand, here you go. This is how you do it.
Are there liners for those buckets?
No, we don't have liners for the five-gallon pails, so that would be, the onus is on the resident to clean that after.
Yeah.
And the only, the only liners that are acceptable are paper bags and newspaper, period. No plastic bags, no biodegradable.
They don't have a second plastic that they have?
No biodegradable bags, no, just paper bags or newspaper only.
And it's not a swap bucket thing? It's a empty your bucket and take it with you?
Yes. I am not washing all of your buckets.
I would ask.
Not washing the buckets.
When 2020 comes. Is new construction going to be allowed to put in a garbage disposal, or is that going to be eliminated?
New construction?
If, if somebody's building a house.
Oh.
Are they going to put a gar, are they going to be allowed to put a garbage disposal in?
Oh, that's interesting.
Those would be fine, as far as I know, because it's not being landfilled. It's just banning them from the landfill. So, if you wanted to handle your food scraps through a, through a disposal system, whether it's your septic system, which I don't recommend, or, or the sewer, that would be up to you, but there's nothing that I know of that A and R is banning anything from. It's just banned from landfill.
So, this is basically for anyone who doesn't have a garbage disposal?
If they.
Or choosing not to use it.
Most towns, they, they probably don't use it, because you shouldn't use it with a septic system, but.
Yeah, exactly.
For gens where everybody's on the sewer, just about everybody's on the sewer, they can't use it.
We're also allowing education.
There might, there are potentially people really don't want to deal with them. A solution is to install a garbage disposal. I'm not talking about new construction. I'm talking about households.
I was, I, I made the assumption wrongly, obviously, that once 2020 came, we could not put anything through any of the systems. That's what I thought that meant.
Well, it's a good question, and first I had it, because most of the towns that we've gone out to so far have been very rural, and they don't have the wastewater treatment facilities, but if you have them, you can use, you can use some, you know, continue.
I believe we would prefer that they aren't used.
Our solids, they don't, they'll, we have to take a disposal at a great rate, so.
I should have checked with you first before I answered that question.
The, the biodegradable bags that Joe mentioned, it's a, it's a tricky situation, because there are some that are acceptable, but they're also very expensive.
Right, so the, yes, the biodegradable bags that they were talking about are, are for the big toters that we would be using.
Right, no, I, I understand, but I know also that on the market, there are some other biodegradable bags.
But there's the difference between that and compostable bags.
Right.
So, there's, because the plastic compostable ones are, we have corn, right?
Yeah, and those are still not acceptable.
And they're still not acceptable.
We, we try to keep the liner bags to a minimum, and it gets confusing, because they have to have the BPI certified compostable logo on them. And we, again, we want to make sure that Vermont Natural Ag Products is happy with the process. There are a lot of compo, what they call compostable bags on the market. Not all of them are BPI certified. And so, rather than having to get into being the compostable bag police and making sure every resident's bag has that symbol, I think it's probably cleaner to just say, use a paper bag or newspaper to line your five-gallon bucket, which would probably suffice in most cases. The toters are problematic in the winter, because they freeze, and you have what we call a food scald, a giant frozen toter, and so the liner bags are very useful there. I'm not sure that they would be totally necessary for homeowners, but that's something that we would probably have to look at if, if we have a lot of homeowners that want to use compostable bags. Yeah, they do make some, but as Cheryl said, they're very expensive.
Excellent. Anything else?
No, I just wanted to, to say that the reason that we are doing this is it's our part of our mission to reduce waste. We only have one landfill left in Vermont. For all the waste from Vermont, it's, it's a type of waste that can be reclaimed and used and should not be going in the landfill, taking up space, where we need to save it for other less benign things. And it doesn't generate the methane that occurs and releases in the environment in a landfill. So, we feel like it's a win-win. Yeah, it might be a little pricier than trash, but the trash volume will go down, and the weight of the trash, just speaking from my own experience, the weight will go down drastically as far as your bag of trash.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Council, any other questions, comments?
Are we, this, the law has changed, and July 1 is that what you guys are?
That's a really good question, Mark. So, we, we kicked that around at our, our last board meeting, and because our waste management ordinance really does set the law for us in Addison County, we, we could have taken that stance and said, regardless of what the state says, this is the law in Addison County. What we decided to do is kind of step back from that, and.
I didn't mean that we should just say, it is what you have to do. I just mean we, we can do it. Where every, all the pieces are in place, and so as.
Because the question, are we ready to go?
You guys are ready to take it.
We've already had the toter. We've already actually had the toter down there. We're just waiting for buckets and handouts.
There's nothing that prevents us from doing it early, yeah.
As a, as a dry run, and then next year, it will be the law, but right now, if you want to, it is available.
And Chittenden County's ready to go. Addison County's ready to go. It's just a few places.
And that was, that was our feeling, too, is because, because it's all in place, I mean, people have already gotten the flyers, the, the outreach has been done. It's, it's on Facebook. It's on Front Porch Forum. It's in the mailings. The materials were available to us, and 2020 is going to be here quickly to, so to start the training process, because we all know that sometimes it takes longer with, so to start it now, it gives us three years versus two years to get people used to the process.
It's also a good opportunity, is there any bugs in the system, to figure out what they are and get through them?
That's right.
You know, so we can call it a pilot program.
Yeah.
So, my, one of the things I.
Yes, sir.
I, relative to CJ's license, I have some questions to CJ's, and I don't know if you want to entertain those questions.
Did they tie together, right? I mean, we can, yeah.
Maybe.
Go for it. Go ahead, throw them.
So, I just want to understand, because right now, we do not have a contract with CJ's, as I explained. You show up and you do your thing, and, and it is something that's worked successfully, and I can tell you, if all of a sudden on a Wednesday or a Saturday, they just didn't show up, I know my phone would ring right off the hook. Like, where the hell, where's CJ's, all right?
There's some money.
And, and because really, they have no obligation to show up there, all right? Now, having said that, you do show up, all right? And you, you take care of all the customers. And one of the reasons why, the reason why I recommended that the city hold off is because the whole handling of food wa, waste is, is different to me, all right? And, and it's, it's not bringing an air conditioner. It's bringing food scraps. There's odors. It's very heavy. What are the mater, you know, what's your plan? I wanted to know the plan, and, and the plan isn't, yep, we're going to take it. I wanted to know the plan, all right? And so, I just want to understand the plan. Is it my understanding that you're, you have some kind of toter that you acquired from the district?
Yes.
And how many gallons is the, and how many gallons is the toter?
Thirty-four gallon.
You have one of those?
I have one of them on the truck now.
Yeah.
And I've been assured that when that's full, I can bring it in and swap it out for another one.
Okay, and so, it is your intention at the end of your day on Wednesday and your end of the day on Saturday, that that toter will go with you?
Okay, not the space here.
All right, so that's, that's, that's all that I was.
The, the goal is always to leave the space where we are cleaner than it was when we got there.
Okay, and if for whatever reason, and I don't, I don't, you know, I roughly know how many customers you have, and, but I don't know how many buckets they're going to have and how, whether or not that's going to fit in the 33. So, obviously, at this point, you're going to start with two buckets, you know, one, and, and then have a, the other one, and if you need more, then you're, you're going to need more, and that's just the deal.
That's what they do for us.
And it's your intention to be collecting that every Wednesday? Getting back to the law, because the law, the law didn't say that you, did not say that, it said that if you collect a trash, you had to collect food scraps, but it did not say that you had to collect food scraps every time you were collecting trash. There was a, there was a frequency issue, but it's your intention to collect food scraps all the time that you are running your operation on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
I think it would be more seamless for people.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Less confusing, less education required.
Yep, okay.
I think, I think that's the, the state's intention, that whenever we're open, we have to take it. The only thing that they said that we could do, like, once in the spring, once in the fall, is the yard cleanup stuff, which would be the leaf and yard debris, but I take that every day also.
So, if there's any, like, signs and stuff, can you, can you talk about that? Like, whether or not that would be down there permanently, if you want that, or would that be with C and J with, like, the, you know, the.
A frame, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Or, you know, the signs, I don't think she's produced the signs yet, but.
She's working on them, and she's going to visit all the drop-offs and contact the PWDs to meet them there, to show where they want the sign, and then that's where you can post.
I would prefer, just myself, even for myself, that a sign not be permanently installed. My fear factor is people will start leaving stuff by the sign.
We can do a sandwich board, something that could fold up and.
Yeah, something light, easy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. And all of that was paid by a grant, by the way. All of the toters was the High Meadows Fund paid for those, two per town, and all of the outreach materials and the bags and the signs. So, we obtained a grant that says we have to start till July 1, and we would lose that we would lose that money if we didn't. So that's another reason we want to get going.
Well, you've actually started before. You have boats down there now.
At the tracer station. Yeah.
So people are already started up.
We've been collecting in Middlebury for years.
But we can bring buckets now to.
To middle, to our station in Middlebury.
Well, no, to here in Regent's.
Oh.
Yes.
Yep. Wednesday afternoons and Saturday mornings.
Yep. Nice. Wow. Exciting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. You may stay and listen if you'd like, or feel free to beep. We're not done with you yet, Mr. Joe, but we're going to take care of that next. We're going to jump right, and thank you very much, people from Addison County Solid Waste. All right, we're going to go vendor license, CJ's haulers. I'd ask for a motion to, Matt makes the motion in a second. Reni, any discussion to approve theirs? Before we do that, I'm going to hold that to see if Mill has any comments.
This is for six months.
Hmm?
No, this is for a year.
Um, you see, Mill, we're getting ready, we got the motion in a second to first.
Yeah, it's for the balance of.
So the remaining six months is what we're agreeing to.
So you're, to extend their vendor's license through December 31st.
Correct.
That's what it is.
All vendor licenses.
January 1st to December 31st. Okay?
So we already agreed to six months. We're just agreeing to the second six months.
Got it.
Got it. So now that we have that ironed out, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So carried? Excellent. F, Mary Johnson Children's Center Planning Grant Resolution.
What do we got, Mel? Probably some people around here, it's like, I forgot about that. So anyway, the long awaited planning grant for the Mary Johnson Children's Center arrived. And I believe that I included this in your packet. And so it requires your signatures. And I think I filled it out. You got it filled out, right, Lynn? Okay?
Yeah.
So I will tell you that my involvement in this is very limited, just so you know. And because the money, the money, the way that this money works is it actually will be flowing through your account. You don't have to, it's really like a Meg Ton grant, the emergency shelter renovated its facility. Take care. You know, that was a, it's what they call a pass-through grant. And whether or not it's a pass-through grant that's doing construction, or a pass-through grant that's doing planning, all right, this grant will pass through a special account that Joan has. And so we really have a little bit of a fiduciary responsibility here. And even though it says Barbara Saunders, I'm assuming that Diane Mirhoff will continue to work with and for Mary Johnson as it relates to administering this grant. And so it requires this resolution be adopted and signed by the city council. And then I need to send that back. And they will, in essence, issue the grant. And they will commence this, the study to plan this new facility over on Armory Lane.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, yep.
Go ahead, a motion to grant this agreement.
We have a motion to grant the agreement.
Sign it. Second. And that was Mark, or, Mark? Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? The ayes have it? Okay. That'll be passed around. Please sign it when it comes by. Proposed amendment to municipal development plan. Is it you or is it Shannon?
Well, let me just, I'm going to just start, and then Shannon will take over. Some of you may know this, others you'll know it when you get home. But at 10 after 5:00, I sent you all an email with an attachment of the, I did not send the entire 114 pages. I sent what was approved by the, by the planning commission last night. You know, there's probably 21 pages there of proposed amendments to the municipal plan. And this is a midterm change. And so Shannon, Shannon will, can give you a little more deal. What I gave them, Shannon, was your cover sheet.
I saw the whole thing.
Oh, did? Were you on that email?
Yeah.
Did I, oh, you did?
Yeah, you copied me.
I did?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good. Good. Yeah, I know I did. I know I did.
Yeah, autopilot.
All right. So Shannon, you know, Shannon will can talk a little bit about what this is about. And then I'll, I'll chime in on your next step.
Okay. So essentially, you may remember, we did some amendments to the MDP just a couple of months ago. That was really focused on reapplication to our designated downtown and things that we statutorily had to do in order to get that designation reapproved. At the same time, we had been working on these proposed amendments for about the last year or so. What's really in there now, we're incorporating the basin master plan that Reni was talking about earlier. It's included as an appendix, but also some of the tables have been called out and embedded within the MDP. There's a beefed up section on solid waste materials management, which we just heard about. It's all in line with Act 148. We're proposing a solar energy overlay district, more to kind of direct any solar construction, where we would like to have it within the city limits, as opposed to, you know, really strenuously saying, no, we don't want it at all. We're trying to take a positive approach and guide where it should be. We are looking at a change that was made the last time we had the plan and regulations concerning ground floor residential use in the central business district. We're submitting that that should revert back to what it was before and disallow ground floor residential in the central business district. And then just some minor tweaks here and there, some language things. But those are, those are the major changes that we're looking at.
And that's what you sent out?
Yes.
Yeah.
It includes the report that goes through all of the changes and ties it back to the goals from the state as far as what we need. And then you actually have pages from the MDP with track changes on that show you what those actual changes are. So rather than having to go through the 120 pages, you get the 20 or 30 pages that are affected.
Great. So one of the, one of the things is the downtown basin master plan is now officially part of the plan as an appendix. And so therefore, you know, if there are any grants out there, you know, it is certainly to our advantage to have them, have that plan specifically part of the municipal downtown plan when pursuing those grants. So the, the next step in, in processing proposed amendments, so again, the planning commission last night passed a motion to officially forward the, their proposed amendments. There was a number of people that came to the hearing and some wanting to cover some new ground with this. And it was, you know, it was well received by the board, but they really felt that it needed more, dealt with potentially a change in designation of some land on Comfort Hill. And the board felt that they should not include that in their proposal to the city council because typically, when there's land use designation changes, we, we send notices out to abutting property owners and people involved and gather more testimony than simply a property owner wanting a portion of their property designated. So they will, they will deal with that, you know, in the future. But that testimony, if you read about it, it's not like it hit on deaf ears, but it just, the planning commission felt it couldn't be forwarded to the board. There was also testimony from a citizen really supportive of returning the plan to prohibiting residential, any additional new residential units on the ground floor in the central business district. So I know some of you have been around the track on that one before. And I'll just apologize, you're heading down that, around that track again. So anyway, that's that. The only thing that the city council needs to do tonight, you, by way of that email transmission that I did, you, it is in your hands. And you are required to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing must be no less than 30 days from your date of receipt. And it must be based on the proposal as it landed to you. Now, in this instance, unlike the, the other planned amendment, when we put this a little bit on the fast track and warn two public hearings in a single notice, I am not recommending that at all. I'm recommending that you pick a date for your public hearing, not less than 30 days from tonight. Take your testimony. And then, you know, you will have to have another hearing. But you'll, depending on that, on the testimony you receive, then you can, you know, take a look at the calendar. And, you know, I will tell you that, you know, it would be appreciated if the city council moves, moves this along. It doesn't have to be a race, but really, the sooner that, that we can get some of these items in, some of them will involve potential zoning changes. And the planning commission can't process a set of zoning changes until, until you've acted on a municipal amendments to that plan. So.
Reni's got his calendar up. Do we agree it has to be the 22nd or after?
27th, I think, the council meeting of.
Yep.
Of the 27th.
So.
Of.
June?
Yeah, June.
So as long as we're having a council meeting on the 27th of June.
Right.
We could, that would be prime time.
That's right. And so the other thing you've talked about, that although your meetings start at 5:30, when there's a public hearing, you know, you, if you want to start that at 6 o'clock or 6, you just tell me what you would want, and we will warn it accordingly.
So we start the, our meeting and then.
Call a break, have the public hearing for as long as it takes, then go back into.
Yep. Yep. So just tell me the date and the time, and we will make it happen.
Is there a time limit, once we have the first one, that I have to have the second one?
Well, the.
Is that within 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
No. You know, I will tell you that if the, if the city council does not act on proposed plan amendments within one year of receipt, they die a natural death. So I don't know that you're worried about that.
I just didn't know if there was, we had to do it within.
There is a 15 day, there is a, when you, when you want to have your second, you do have to have a second hearing. And there is a 15 day notice requirement for that public hearing. So, so.
15 calendar days or 15.
Calendar days. So this is the process that I would, you know, let's say that you have this public hearing. The fastest thing, you have this public hearing on the 27th, and there's no reason to change the proposal, then you, you set a date for your next public hearing, which will be, allow me to get something in the newspaper 15 days in advance of that hearing. So there's 20 days or whatever. And the way that it works is when you have that second public hearing, your option at the end of that hearing is to either adopt it or make some changes, have another hearing. Anytime you make some more changes, got to have another, another public hearing.
If we warn, I'm trying to use the system here. If we warn both meetings, could we warn both meetings whenever, soon, so that we can have the meeting on the 27th of June, and then have the second meeting, providing that we don't make changes for the 11th?
I would suggest that you're not, yeah, I think that the downtown.
I know, but it's just, if you want it to speed up the process. Otherwise, the earliest we can have it is the 25th.
And that's fine. That's okay.
Of July.
And that's fine, you know, because there, as opposed to the earlier amendment where it was pretty cut and dry for the downtown designation, there may be some things that come out that we need to relook at again. It happens. I would rather, you know, schedule the second public meeting after that first one, to make sure that everything's cohesive.
And I would like to see strong representation from.
Oh.
The planning commission at that first one, so that if there's questions, you're more knowledgeable than I am by a long shot. And I.
So let me, let me give you a hot, let me give you a potential hotspot in this, in this process. You know, I wasn't paying real close attention to Shannon because I had to pay close attention to her last night. But anyway, let me, let me just tell you. One of the things is, is that the land use map is, which has always been one page, is going to be going to two pages. Not that that's a big deal. But the, the second page will only have overlay districts. So we have this archaeological overlay district, we have a flood hazard overlay district, and we have a proposed solar facilities overlay district. And what that solar overlay district is to basically set forth, so Shannon's, in his right hand, the pinkish are areas that the planning commission feels is acceptable to entertain a solar, a solar facility. Okay? So let's say that the public, you know, Andy Kerkaldi will be calling me tomorrow specifically about that map right there. And let's say that you end up with some discussion, and people say, listen, I don't think there should be some solar panels over that field, such and such. So let's, city council takes that testimony. If the city council wants to change that proposed map, it takes a little while to get that map changed. So that when you warn your second hearing, you know, you have to have those changes completely done before the notice goes out into the, into the newspaper. So there's, I don't think there's a way to expedite it.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
We can get to the testimony. And it seems we, and.
It'll, that'll tell you. That'll tell you.
And then we just say, okay, we're canceling the meeting that's two weeks down the road.
Right, right, right.
And so you know, we did work very cooperatively with the Addison County Regional Planning Commission on these maps. These are maps that the Energy Committee has worked pretty hard on for Addison County, for known constraints and possible constraints and where it might be feasible. And put that together with Shannon's, already had a map of areas that were concern, of concern. So it did come together in a very thoughtful manner.
The first meeting has to be within 30 days, or it has to be at least 30 days out?
At least 30 days.
Okay.
So it has to be the 27th.
So as long as no one has any concerns, we'll schedule that first hearing for June 27?
Time, time?
Cheryl is the one that raised the issue about being able to get here and about having the hearings delayed. So what would be a good time? Is 6:00 adequate?
I think 6:00 is the very earliest that a lot of people could get here if they work out of town.
I'd prefer, I know nobody wants to go to 7:00. We're not going to be guaranteed. But I think we're pretty well guaranteed we're going to be here at 6:30. So I would like to entertain 6:30 as the hearing time.
Maybe you can get most of everything else done out of the way before.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean, we'll just keep rocking and rolling on our council meeting. And then we'll just do a recess, temporary recess, and go into the hearing, public hearing, and then do that, take that, and go right back in the meeting and hopefully wrap up on time. So, okay?
Do you need a motion? Need any motion for this, or is this, we're going forward?
As long as we don't have a whole hearing, we, within 30 days, you know, so it's okay.
We're, we're good. We're in agreement. Counsel is in agreement. We got a bunch of heads nodding. And hopefully that's not from falling asleep. Shannon, like I said last night, I stayed for the public hearing part. And the information came late to you, so I didn't really have time to respond. What the planning commission is doing is in the right and best interest of the city of Regent's. There's going to be another change in 2018?
Well, we'll start.
Or 2018.
2018. The current plan, even, even with the amendments that we make, will expire in 2019. So we're going to start fresh, you know, very soon on.
So we're going to start fresh, you know, very soon on a total plan rewrite anyway, which then will be valid for eight years, once that gets passed. But we'll be able to reflect any, any of the changes that we don't necessarily make now, we'll be able to incorporate them down the road.
And I express my thanks to the members on the great job that they're doing and I'm going to be approaching a few of them come July, be, the middle of July, so that we can reappoint them come August, because there's some appointments that need to be done in August. So again, publicly, thank you, great job, a lot of hard work went into this. So, any other comments, questions on that? If not, okay, we covered the proposed neighborhood?
Nope.
We're gonna do that.
We're ready.
We're ready.
Okay.
Mel?
Sure, so-
Pass my bedtime.
My slow sprint, this is my slow printer, okay? So I think that there's maybe three or four of, of, not that, nope, that's the false park, that, nope, Mark, right here, okay? So what this is, this is something the city council talked about, I really think, it might have been last January or February, about whether or not the city would be interested in establishing a neighborhood development district. And at the time, the, there was not a motion made, but there was a, a consensus, if you will, that the board say to proceed with caution. And I think that the reason why the city council said proceed with caution was no different than some of the reaction from some of the members of the planning commission, that when the state puts out a brochure about a program that has some enhancements for housing and this phrase in there that says limits folks' rights of appeal, you know, you know, people like the city council and people like Jason Farrell says, you know, I'm not wild about some program that limits the rights of people to appeal zoning permits. I mean, the DRB, people submit applications, they hold public hearings, they take testimony, they're gonna make a decision, and if somebody doesn't like decision, they have a right to appeal. So the idea of, you know, taking away somebody's right of appeal didn't set very well. So we wanted to dig in a little further, I, what is there, five or six communities in Chittenden County that have this neighborhood development district, and so we wanted to dig in a little bit more in this and Shannon and myself and Faith Ingersoll, who is the-
Ingersoll.
Whatever Shannon, whatever Shannon says. And Gary Holloway, who is the downtown director, Amy, I'm not sure, Kevin Rooney might have been there as well. So anyway, we met with, with them and, because we wanted to learn more about this. Now, I can tell you that an individual property owner can take their property and apply to have their property be a, a neighborhood development district, as long as their property is within a half a mile of the downtown development district. So an individual property can do that. We, we really feel that this thing, you know, we just think that should be a city thing, all right? And have the city generate the map, and so that's what the planning commission did last night. I drew a map in about ninety seconds and actually Bob Ferenstein came to the meeting last night and felt that the northern gateway district should also be included in this, in this neighborhood development district. Now, the northern gateway district is outside of the yellow, so if you understand the yellow lines here, you've got the, the red in the middle is the, is the designated downtown and then if you, this yellow line is one half mile from the perimeter of the development district and then the blue line is the planning commission's proposed downtown development district. Lynn, can you pull, can you, can you just show me yours?
You want mine?
That one, yeah.
That's the old one.
Oh, sorry.
That's the one I got, the package right there.
I want the new one, that's the new one. Thank, I, that's, I knew I sent you the old one.
Did you cheat on him?
Well, this one, that was my, that's a ninety-second job, right there, okay?
For the duck, the minute and a half.
This one, yeah, this one's got some time on it, you know, this one's got a good minute and a half. But basically, the difference is, is that it reaches up into the northern gateway district and, and it is outside the yellow line, but, you know-
It's supportable.
Yeah, I think, we think that it's supportable. Like, for instance, in the city of Burlington, when you take their down, their designated downtown and you draw a yellow circle a half a mile from their designated downtown, half of it's out in the middle of the lake, all right? So you're not going to do too many housing projects. Well, you could do a housing project in the middle of the lake, but anyway. So Burlington actually has a fair amount of, of their neighborhood development district outside of that half mile, kind of arguing that, you know, that because they lose so much land to, to the lake and they were successful at making that a little bit larger, the, so we would, you know, it, maybe the planning commission has the right to apply for this. I really feel that the city council, this is really a city council decision. I think the city council should, and I would recommend that the city council authorize the, it's really the planning commission and the partnership, Rennie, right, I mean, the partnership supports, supports this, this, this designation. Now, in looking at what it does, it's not, it isn't in and of itself going to set the world on fire, but it actually gives some benefits to development related to housing. You know, it, it allows certain types of housing projects to potentially pay less wastewater fees to the state of Vermont, there, it might be a smoother Act two fifty process. And, and just to clarify, what, what faith, when we, when we question faith about what were you saying when you said limited appeal, they, and they're going to change their brochures after the meeting they had with us, so that they, it, it's better said. And basically what it means is, is like, for instance, in, in the, in the high density re, in our maps, in the high density residential district, in the medium density residential district, in the, in the northern gateway district, we allow multiple family dwellings as a conditional use. So let's say if somebody applies to develop their property with multiple family dwellings and a budding property owner can't appeal that zoning permit because it's a multiple family dwelling. There is a presumption of, of use that if your municipal plan and your zoning regulations state that, that a multiple family dwelling is allowed by, by conditional use in the northern gateway district and a budding property owner that doesn't like the project can't appeal on the basis of use. They can appeal that it doesn't meet parking, they can appeal that they don't like the height of it, I mean, all the other regulations they could appeal, but they can't appeal based on just use. And that's what they were trying to say. And I can tell you that our DRB, if, if, if you, if, if, if a multiple family dwelling requires conditional use, it's really just about the conditions and compliance with the performance standards. The, the DRB is going to approve it, because the regulations already state that it is allowed by a conditional use. A conditional use, it isn't a variance, it is, it is allowed use in this district, provided it meets the criteria for granting a conditional use. So having said that, I, I think that Jason felt-
He was, after, after all of the explanation, he was very supportive of the idea.
So Reddy, I'm gonna let you take it from here. Anyway, let me, let me tell you one thing, I, I really support this thing, because I, I really think that one of the problems of the city we suffer from is stagnant population. I, I really do, I, I, and I think we have some areas, you know, zone, high density, we have some areas, northern gateway district, we have some areas that, that can accommodate housing. And I think that if we can, if we can help the state not collect money, I shouldn't say it that way, but there is any, there is any city, there is any, we're not waiving our fees, but, but anyway, if there is some advantages to a developer, you know, I, I feel that it's an opportunity for them. And it's something that you, not every town can get them. You, you have to have a, either a village center or a designated downtown to even apply for this, and it's a five-year deal.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? I just, I want to make sure I understand. So is the purpose to develop neighborhoods or is it the purpose to provide housing?
I'm gonna say both.
Yeah, both.
So putting on my other hat as a real estate agent, I think I would have concerns about having a very mixed neighborhood. Single-family houses in neighborhoods don't necessarily go well with a duplex or a four family. Now, if we're talking about-
Don't go well or don't sell well?
Well, they don't mix well, you know, there's, there's not necessarily pride of ownership in a multi-family. I, I don't know if you're talking about condos, single-family condos, are you talking about rentable units? And I, and I think that there has to be some conversation about mixing those two, and I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying it's, it's more, it's more difficult to have a family move into a neighborhood that's got a lot of multi-families, especially if they're not owner occupied. So that's what I'm trying to get to. So are these going to be rental units that the, the owner is in Burlington? Or is this going to be single-family houses, that there's going to be pride in ownership, that there's going to be, you know, you're not going to have a mobile home and a boat and a, something else in the, you know, parked in the yard?
I think it depends on what the developer is, is putting forth as a project. What this is doing is allowing some benefits for that developer. They would still have to meet whatever standards are in that district to begin with, so it, it could be, it could be a lot of different things. I can't tell you that it would be owner occupied, you know, it really-
Like, sadly, like Mel said, that if they come in and they cannot deny a multi-unit permit.
Basically, basically because a multi-unit, even now, if we don't have an NDA, if that use is allowed through the process, that use would be allowed through the process. So if I was a developer and I purchased a property, I could put forth an application for a multi-family dwelling. Whether it gets approved or not is dependent upon the, whether I meet those performance standards, but because it's, it's an accepted use, a, an approved conditional use, it can't be turned down because of that. That already exists.
So one of these, this-
And then I'm letting Mel jump in.
Does not change the local zoning.
Right.
All it does is that if the local zoning is within this district, it allows certain benefits to accrue to whoever the developer is. It does not change the zoning. So if, if in fact, somebody is, and how, because the partnership started looking into this, because we have a, we hope we have a developer who is going to make a multi, multi-family units in the high-density residential zone, it's allowed. And so it's not changing anything about the local zoning. All it is, is almost kind of an overlay that allows certain benefits to accrue to a developer who does that within that overlay. That's all it does. It doesn't change local zoning one bit. So whatever is allowed now would be allowed then. The only difference is, is that if the development goes through, they may be eligible to not have to go through Act two fifty, yeah, two fifty, and some other regulations that they would get charged for by the state, they wouldn't get a charge. Now, I had only heard this, I have not confirmed it anyplace, but there's a development that probably everybody knows in Heinsberg, where they don't have a downtown, but you know, where the Obeshaun hardware is and all of this, there's that development there? Went through and they put that overlay district there and they were eligible and I, I heard that it's, it saved the developer thirty thousand dollars in development costs. So what it does is it can provide a financial incentive for a project to happen. And why we got interested in the beginning is just because downtowns need more people and that's why the state developed this, so that you could extend, in a way, kind of almost extending your downtown a little bit, so that you could develop places for people to live that are close to downtown. That's why it's, it has to be within a half a mile of the downtown. Preferably all walking distance. That's, that's really the objective of it. So there, there shouldn't be really any problem relative to that, if there's a mixed use that you're talking about, it's because the mixed use is already allowed by local zoning. This will not change it.
Is it already mixed use?
Lynn, before you have Mel, you had something to add?
So, as you know, we, we, we have a number of residential districts, the, the, in the, in the agricultural and rural residential district and the new low-density residential district, which is Commodore, which is Commodore Drive, is now a new district, low-density resi, it used to be an overlay district and that just got goofy. So anyway, we do not allow multiple family dwellings in the agricultural and rural residential district and we do not allow multiple family dwellings in the low-density residential district. However, we do allow multiple family dwellings in medium density, high density. I, I, historic neighborhood, I, I want to think about that one a little, I don't want to say anything about that without putting it in front of me, but we allow multiple family dwellings. Now, if, if you think that the, if you think that the city ought to talk about multiple family dwellings in the medium-density residential district, whether or not they should or shouldn't be, then that's, you need to go to the planning commission, have that discussion. But like Rennie says, currently, that's the, that's the law on the land. Now, let me just tell you to be very, very specific, all right? I have been waiting for the next twenty-five units of elderly housing since they pounded the fir, the last nail in the one that's up, okay?
And Mel, I've already had some discussion.
And that, that piece of land right there, it is outside of the yellow and I haven't called Matt Moore. I don't know if he watches V cam or not, but I can tell you that I would, I would like to get this neighborhood development district and, and be able to call up Matt Moore and say, Matt, I just want to let you know that what we did for you in Vergence, all right? We, you can put another twenty-five units over there, the, there, you're not going to get a state wastewater, it's fifty dollars a unit or something, and your, your Act two fifty is going to be greatly reduced. So I can tell you, on that property alone, I, there isn't any other program that I've got relative to that, for that's a very specific project that would really benefit. You know, is it, it sounds like you're, you're, you don't like this appeal thing, is that the issue? You think somebody-
No, I just, you know, to, it's, it's easy on paper to say this is what can happen, you know, with a general permit, but there, then there's reality. So, I mean, I was under the impression that the town, the city was trying to get young families to move in, become part of the school, become part of the community, that that's who we were trying to attract here and develop the, the senior housing. I'd actually called senior housing because there's so many people waiting to get in. And I'm just, when you, when, if there's no covenants or there's no necessarily any rules to it, then it can become, you know, it might look nice when it's first built, but what does it look like twenty years from now? That's my concern.
Understood. Actually, we're, we're supporting lifespan housing, so it's, you know, all the way through. It's a valid concern, but this program does nothing to, to, to alter what, what the current, current situation is for that. It's just a, it's another tool in the toolbox that may entice some, some development and bring some people that we need.
Potentially, because you're going to save the contractors money, that would make it more affordable for younger families to buy, as opposed to some of the older Victorian houses that are stuck around here that are going for top dollar that you have to cut. I know that duplex or that area in Heinsberg that you're speaking of, that's mainly younger families. And I know, I have ten good friends in there, they're all younger than me, and it's like younger professionals, because it's easier to commute, and that's the reason I moved to Vergence. So otherwise, it's going to make money cooking, so they're going to be in Burlington or Middlebury, and this place is perfect. So, I mean, if you can incentivize things, I think it'd make the most sense. So, I mean, if you can incentivize things, I think it'd make the most sense. I mean, for businesses, everything. I mean, Vergence has a lot to offer. If you add that, that would just make it even more of a focal point. They're just my two cents, anyway. As a business owner, I would love more people to be around here.
I think I heard Jason say last night that his take on this was, "Act 250 was burdensome and the state recognized that." And instead of like changing Act 250, "Here's another program that will allow the, the burdens of Act 250 to be a little bit less burdensome, but without changing Act 250." It was an easier approach.
We, I know it's got double answers, you know, when we are running way beyond, but we're having some great discussion and it's something that has to happen at some point. So, um, are we ready for a motion to move forward with this and, and pass it?
If you're looking at me, I, I think I have my answer, yes.
Anybody else? So I guess I would entertain a motion to...
Endorse the application.
Endorse the application?
Oh, I'll make that motion if, as long as nobody thinks it's a conflict because the partnership originally started this.
So we're asking that the yellow line actually...
Come the blue line?
The yellow line, it doesn't, that is, that's just a guide.
Right.
That, and don't, it's just a guide, all right? And so the point is, is that when this application goes in, I can tell you, if, if the entire district was inside of the yellow line, it's a no-brainer, okay? If you put some land outside of it, we're gonna have to have a rationale. And that's, and that's my sense.
And that's what was discussed last night?
I, I will tell you, Mark, you know, and I know you're on the school board, but you know, there's a huge chunk here. There's a huge chunk of school land.
Mm-hmm.
And we talked about that last night of, should it be in, should it be out? I mean, there's no, there ain't no housing going on in there.
And there's not gonna.
You know, but, but we think that maybe it should be in there because what, what's a neighborhood without a school, okay? And so we, we didn't, we didn't want to take it out. But if for some reason the regulators, uh, I will tell you this, that there is a part of this, part of the, their review, it, it, it is required that the density be at least four units per acre. Now, I, you know, I know they don't want to listen to this again. I know you don't want to listen to me again, Cheryl, okay, about that. But the point is, like, for instance, the, the school land, that doesn't meet four units per acre. You can't build a house in there at all, okay? But, but the rationale is we're gonna put in the district because it's, it's school property and that, and schools should be in the neighborhood. But I, but again, you know, if we, if we send this thing up there and they say, "What are these tracks of land?" Or if they took a land use map and say, "Well, no, no, you shouldn't." If you can't, you should not have any land in this district that does not housing. It's like, "Okay, okay, take it out. It's all right. It's okay with us."
Some of that's wetland.
It's in the school district.
Yep.
In case you've got the other, your northern corridor.
That Northern Gateway District, yep.
I assume we've got potential housing could be developed behind the, the police station.
That's correct.
But everything else up there is not gonna ever be housing unless Kennedy Brothers changes to apartments.
That's...
But everything else is...
Well, upstairs, oh yeah, we, we would entertain.
But I mean, that, so there's not a lot of housing se- potential.
Yep.
Whereas down here, we already have a giant neighborhood that's been cut out. So we're gonna extend up here to a possibility. Is there a reason we're not extending down here?
Well, just so, when you look down there, first off, the, the one that looks like Vermont, see the side, sideways Vermont? That's Fisher Park, that's owned by the city. And the one just outside is the Catholic Cemetery. So, let me just tell you, we had a little, we had a little discussion last night of saying, "Let's just apply for the city," okay? All right, but you can't, uh, I will tell you that in the, in the medium-density residential zone, single-family is 15,000 square feet, all right? That's not four units per acre, all right? However, we did include the housing for the elderly because if you have an elderly project, you're gonna get a density bonus and you, and it's gonna be over six units. And the formula is 15,000 square feet for the first unit. I'm doing exactly what I said it wouldn't do. 15,000 for the first unit. And 10,000 square feet for each unit thereafter. And so when you do the math, the minute that you hit 5.3 units, you meet the four units per acre. So on a multiple-family dwelling like a senior housing, you meet the, you meet that density requirement. But, so, we just didn't include that because it was all, it's, it's all developed down there.
Rennie, what was your motion again, please?
And we don't have a second?
I second Rennie's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
I thought it had seconded. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of discussion.
No?
Oh, if you want a second, you can.
No, no, I, I, not me, I thought it had been seconded.
Okay. And nobody has a problem with Rennie making the motion?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor in, in it, for endorsing this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Phil carried? Dog warrants? This is something that is required by...
How'd I do today? I, I tried to collect money today, Joan. How'd I do? There you go.
Your original list says 23. And as of 4:30, we have...
I did a little smiling and dialing today.
19. So that's probably 13 dog owners, but there's 19 dogs that are not registered. And they've all received two letters and been given time.
So you got a blank copy?
And they just don't respond to us, you know? So this is the step we take. And an officer usually goes to their home and gives them five days to get to the city hall. And that'll take care of all but two or three that they have to chase down, only to find out they gave the dog away a year ago. And the letter says, "If you no longer have your dog, please call us and we'll take you off the register and stop bothering you." But they don't call us.
Joan, can we have that? This is a blank copy for signatures?
Yep.
So if we get that right over to, to Matt?
Oh, I'll remember.
So one of the things that Joan should also report on, because I can tell you, this, we are diligent about people with dogs. So I can tell you, we, if you own a dog, it needs to be vaccinated and registered. And so we are, we take it seriously. So what's your number, Joan? What is the number of dogs you've registered this year?
370.
Okay. And I don't, yeah.
Uh, for a dog warrant?
Just sign it.
Do you need a motion or we just sign it?
Just sign it.
Yeah, just sign it.
Just sign it and I go. So we're gonna move right on to city green, tree removal?
Yeah, I, let me tell you.
Short and sweet.
Mark your calendar, Chris Olson. It took me a little while to get to Chris, but I, I was able to talk to him today and he tried to get here today and just couldn't get here today. But he is gonna be at my office at 8:30 in the morning and then we're gonna walk down to the park. So Rennie, uh, and Mike, you can't. So we just, if I, all right. So, but we want to make sure we don't have a quorum. Rennie, Rennie, you can't?
No.
Okay, all right.
You're on your own.
All right, so, uh... I don't want to, no, I want you to stay at the pool.
Yeah, if you can, stay at the pool.
Yeah, but anyway, so he's coming at 8:30 and he actually is not only going to assess the, the five trees that I want him to look at, but he's, he's gonna look at the, he's gonna look at the, at the park and, and give us, I think he's got some background in, in this. So, uh, he sounded enthused and so I'll be able to report back on this at the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll hold the chainsaws.
Jump right into, jump right into proposal recycling budget?
Sure. So, uh, what I would like is the, uh, is the city council to approve my proposed recycling program budget so that I can send these contracts out to the towns. It, they're actually, I'm, you can tell by the email, I think I included an e... It's, I think I included an email with Randy Dampron and you can see that I'm not totally done the discussion there, all right? But I, but I'm done, safe enough to know that we can keep our contracts the same with the surrounding towns. And as long as the monthly fee only moves in one direction, it will give us a little, a little bit of a pad there. I got, you, you see, I think last year we ended with $348. That's, you know, that's one, uh... Out, out of this budget, I will tell you that the, the budget pays for the contracts and if there's any repairs to our compactor that the, that the, uh, Public Works Department uses, we would probably charge that to the recycling, so...
I would ask for a motion to approve the recycling budget as presented?
So moved.
Uh, Rennie made the motion, I have a second? Mark seconded it? Any discussion? Short and sweet? Didn't hear any? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so moved. Now, we move to L. First thing that, uh, we gotta talk about is anything that happens on city property, it has to be approved by the city council. Len is working on a project called Harmony Park and we haven't gone through the formal process of approving to accept that onto city property. So I would entertain a motion from anybody but Len, uh, say authorizing the Rotary to, uh, install a Harmony Park on city property once we have finalized the location and where it's gonna land.
Sorry?
It'll be in Falls Park.
He made the motion?
So moved by Mark. Rennie seconded it? Any discussion, questions?
So one of the things that the, just so that folks know, I, I, I brought this to the attention of the Development Review Board and the Development Review Board feels that this is not exempt activity and they, that a, a permit, uh, would be, a site plan review is requ... would be required by them, number one. Number two, we, this property is encumbered by an Act 250 permit and it states that if there's any changes, it needs approval from the district. I think that's whatever their title, district coordinator, district advisor. The point being, it may not, you know, it may not need, uh... They may sign off on it, but you, they need to be approached. They need to be presented the plan and they either, they either feel that it does require a permit that goes through its process, administrative amendment, or they take no jurisdiction. So I need, I would, at a minimum, I need to, something needs to go to them and, uh, they'll, they'll act on it. The other thing that folks, just so you know, there, uh, the Vergence Falls Park is very much encumbered by easements to Green Mountain Power. Uh, the, uh, the easement for the high-tension line is 50 feet either side of the center line. And I'm not gonna say that you can't do anything within the easement area, but, you know, there may, depending on the location of anything down there, there may, it may require discussion with Green Mountain Power. Because you, you can't, you gotta, we have to respect that, you know, respect that easement.
And I've already told Len, I'm gonna take it by myself, with or without the council's approval. I'd like their approval, uh, to approach Green Mountain Power to ask for permission to locate some of those facilities that we're talking about, uh, down there. Because it's, it's, uh, we're talking about a pavilion. Uh, we want to make it handicap accessible, uh, so that's gonna have to be fairly close to the parking lot and fairly close to the lines. But I don't think, uh, once we lay it out in the ground so some, the representative from their business can see it, it's, it's not gonna interfere with what they need to do with transmission lines. I think we can do a similar thing with, uh, Frisbee Golf. It's, Frisbee Golf is just nothing more than a post in the ground and about a two-foot diameter basket to shoot at and the tee boxes. And so, and they're, they're flat at ground level. We may have some little bit of signs, signposts around here and there. And what Len's offering to do, uh, again, it can be arranged, whatever, so it's, it's not obstructive to access to their power lines. So I think it's all accomplishable, um, but we would have to, I feel the next step would be to have a conversation with Green Mountain Power before we go to an Act 250. Make sure that we can try to put some of this stuff closer to the pa... Not necessarily underneath the power lines, but closer to the power lines and, and still have them, uh, have access to that area. Any comments?
I'll just comment that, um, Matt and I went down on Friday night and where the park was originally planned, it's not exactly under the line, but it's so close, it's, really is under the line.
It's within the 50 feet of the center line.
Yeah, so we moved it to a flatter piece of land, but it's still, I'm sure, in the 50 feet right of way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's, if anyone's been down there, it's near where the barbecue grills are and the picnic tables and, um, just below where the city docks are on this false side of the road. So it's nice and flat. It doesn't look like it floods, um, at this point. But even if it did, all these things are metal and, and can withstand the water. So, um, not, Matt did some research on how they go in and, and the square footage that we need, but I feel we can't make any final decisions either way of where it's gonna be unless we go on-site. So I'd like to propose at some point, we meet down there and just look at the site, because it's hard to describe until you're there.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be my only request at some point.
And just by way of clarification, I'm a non-compensated volunteer on this project, so I don't feel that there's any reason to recuse myself in the conversation.
Yeah, Matt's just helping us do the installation, because that's his expertise, but he doesn't, he's doing it as a good guy.
Do you want an official meeting down there? Or do you just want to drag us down one by one?
We have ever, we have ever had a council meeting down there and had a little picnic. Did some hot dogs and hamburgers.
Yeah, that's, I was asking, do we want to have an actual quorum down there? Or do you just want to take us down one by one and say, "What do you think?" I, I'm just asking the question, Matt.
I would rather have everybody there so we can have the discussion, because it's already been delayed a couple of months now, it sounds like, so...
And what I'd like to try to do is get some of the volunteers on the basin committee there, uh, so that they, their perspective is heard as well, uh, in the conversation. So, um...
It might not be a bad idea, Mike, to start to map out if we're having several different installations in there, to have some sort of document as to where a pavilion may be landing.
I can, I can do that on the present, Matt, but that's why I want to have some conversation, because of the push and shove that we're running into now with Green Mountain Power possibilities. So that's why I want to try to get something going sooner than later with Green Mountain Power to see what leeway they'll, you know, allow us, if any at all.
Yeah.
So, and, and part of the issue is high water, ice and this sort of thing. This, this is why we want to position some of the stuff where it's most safest. I mean, one year we had a backup in February and, you know, it, the ice damaged the fence. That was God. Back, what did Matt say? I think it was in the 80s? So, and unless we have a solid ice here...
I'm not guaranteeing this installation.
If the ice is hitting the fence, Len, all bets are off.
So...
There's not enough concrete in the budget for that.
No, no. So, we've got a motion on the floor to accept Len's, uh, proposal as far as Harmony Park. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. And all four of us, except for Len, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so Len, are you recusing yourself? Abstaining? Abstaining? Uh, so moved? Done deal for now until we get the other part. Uh, as far as the meeting, um... Lot of stuff going in the first part of June. Our meeting in June is, I don't have that other calendar with me. 13th? It's the first of June.
I'll miss that one.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, it says it's June 13th.
13.
And it's not a hearing night. We're gonna have the hearing on the 27th, so the 13th probably would be the better of the two nights that month and so we can get things moving. That just puts pressure, a little pressure on me as far as discussion with finding, or I'm gonna ask you to help me find out who I need to really talk at or talk with at Green Mountain Power. And Dorothy Schmores, if that's the one I need to go with. We're gonna meet with Dorothy. Okay, so the 13th, we are meeting, uh, still 5:30 meeting time? Sound good?
Sure.
Me at the park, 5:30, um, and, uh...
Did you sign?
The 13th.
Thirteen.
And, uh, if it's raining, um...
Bring an umbrella.
Yeah, no, 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 but I was thinking if, if, if it's a pleasant day, maybe we, I, I could cook up some hot dogs and hamburgers down there. So, it could be a, a working, a, a working meal. Okay, we'll leave that to discussion later, I'll have to see what I can come up with. Okay, um...
Can I jump?
Sure.
Couple back, since we were on dog warrants and then went backwards.
Yep.
I will officially decline to sign on this, because as last year I had mentioned that I don't like the fact that we're gonna potentially kill a dog. I know it's the state law, but I don't think it's the dog's problem, the dog is the one getting penalized for the owners...
You, you are sitting in Joe Clark's chair.
So you said last year, too. And I signed it last year, and I regretted that signature ever since, so I'm just putting on record that that's why I...
No, you're, that's fine.
Say that we have to kill them?
We don't.
Come on, I hope not.
But that's what the law...
It's, it's the state law.
And I think it's a badly stated law.
Yeah.
I don't, I know that we don't do it, but it's there, and I think that that's, it's not the dog's fault, they got a bad person.
Right.
If we change that, no, I was gonna say, if we change that to the...
Well, we can't change the state law.
If we, if we change it to read the person gets put down instead of the dog.
I think we would have a lot faster property tax payoffs if that was...
But, thank, thank you for...
Definitely a law that needs to be changed, alright, and so maybe, you know, somebody should, should, uh, volunteer to write an email to Warren and Diane. You know, because I can tell ya, you know, if we have four Mark, Mark Konigs on this board, I, you know, you know, we, I thought that...
Here I am now watching where I sign, I should've signed at the top, but I...
That's alright.
So you got two signatures there.
Alright.
Then, a dollar something will get you a beer, no, I won't get you a beer. How much is a beer nowadays? Oh, okay.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you, we'll see ya.
Thank you.
Alright, you got it.
We're, we're pushing on limits here, so we're gonna go right into Mel's. Um, so, you, you don't need to do any sort of presentation, uh, tonight, I waive that until we get some dust settled here, okay? Great. Alright, so, city manager.
So, if you don't look at the sewer budget, uh...
I already did, I read it, perfect, I love it.
Uh, so anyway, everything else, really, it, it looks, it, it looks good, it really does, but boy, don't spend a lot of time with that sewer budget. And, uh, uh, you know, I, I'll, I'll tell ya, one of the things I mentioned to you before about electricity, we're actually being hit in a couple of ways. I, actually, I've been in touch with Sarah Valdivinos, is our, she's the contact person, if you will, or owns our solar agreement down there. And I can tell ya, um, you know, we, we, ten percent of the generation comes to us, and so the credit shows up on our Green Mountain Power bill, and so I see the bill and I load it in, and I have a spreadsheet that has this crap in, in there, uh, and I can tell ya, it, you know, it really looked awful. And I fired an email out, and I said, Ser- uh, Sarah, I think there's something wrong with our solar, uh, thing. And, and I think they've uncovered that there was something wrong with, with, um, the system down there, maybe only half of it was, was actually generating, or something went on there because of the, the amount of credit. So what happened is, is last year we actually had a pretty good year of, of generation, uh, because they cut a lot of trees and this type of thing. So, two thousand and sixteen, it was up a little bit, and when the generation is up and you reset the amount of money that we pay her, that's, that, you know, at one point it was twenty-five hundred dollars a month, now it's twenty-eight hundred and eighty-six dollars in, in the warrants. So that's hitting the sewer department budget. And then, so we're paying more money towards electricity based on what it generated last year. But this year, because we had a bad, a bad January, February, March, I'm not getting credits on my bill. And so we're seeing this inflated elect- electric bill, alright, and so that's why you see that we've spent sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars on electricity. Part of it is that problem. The other part, I can tell ya, is there really was a time, uh, I finally grew out of this, that, that I used to, I used to go tell the wastewater treatment plant, don't forget electricity's cheap, electricity gets expensive in November, so drop the air in the lagoons and this type of thing. And, and that's not really how you run a treatment plant, it really is based on dissolved oxygen in, in there. So, my operators, they run the blowers based on the condition of the lagoons, alright? And so, part of it is, is we're, we're using more, uh, we're using more electricity. The other thing, we've totally revamped the filtration system, and so that it is running properly all the time, alright? The result is, we end up with a better effluent, but your operation cost is, is higher. So, you know, I, I'm not ready, Mr. Koenig, to agree that you were right, that we should've, maybe we might not have, uh, maybe we should not have gone with ninety-six dollars, alright? I'm not quite there yet, but I can tell ya, it's, it's gonna be a challenge to, uh, to, to hold that, to hold that rate. And it's just the, it's just the reality, alright, so, um...
You, you mentioned solar, one of the things that... I would like to see us entertain at some point is to approach Green Mountain Power and see the feasibility of them helping us put solar panels on the roof of the fire station, uh, at a very inexpensive rate to us, so that, uh, we can, uh, try to reduce some of our bills in other locations. Because you can do it so that anything you do produce, it goes against your bill, and then you, you just pay the balance, so...
Yeah.
It's, uh, if, if they're still doing that program, it would be nice to, uh, consider that. So maybe that can be part of the conversation I can have when I have the other.
Well, the bathhouse is gonna need a new roof, we could look at putting solar on that, too.
It's, it's a prime time to do it. I mean, in any facility that the city owns, or any facility that anybody owns, they can deem a percentage of the generate, the energy they use to another relative or friend. If you overproduce. So, prime location, and the bathhouse would be a super one. Because you, you'd produce enough during the summer, probably offset what you used, you generate in the wintertime, and you store those credits. Yeah, they have to be used within one year of when they're generated. Sorry.
That's okay, so, uh, that's it on bu- budget. Uh, night, two thousand and seventeen grand list, just wanna let you know the listers completed their work earlier in the month of, uh, earlier this month. Uh, grievance has, grievance meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, June sixth, at, I think it's five, five or five, is it five o'clock, Joan, five o'clock? Uh, you know, all of the, all of the notices went out, you know, you total up the grand list, uh, we have experienced about a one and a half percent increase in the grand list, and better than zero, but, you know, obviously that's not a big, you know, so like instead of a penny, instead of a penny, and the grand list not finalized yet, but instead of a penny raising twenty-two thousand, you know, then maybe, you know, a penny will raise, you know, twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars, or something like, whatever the, whatever the increase is. So, so their work is done. What I can't remember if, whether or not I reported, did I report to the board that the, that I, they had the hearing with, that we had a hearing with VV2? Did I report that at the last meeting? Okay, alright, so I haven't got that decision yet, uh, so we'll keep you posted on, uh, on that one. So, that's, that's, uh, I will tell you that, uh, delinquent taxes are not looking real good, uh, at the moment. I ran a report this morning, Joan, uh, and the, the total delinquents was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And, but again, we have this fifteen-day grace period, and so, anybody out there watching that is part of that one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, it would behoove them to come to City Hall and visit Joan by, by May thirty-first, uh, May thirtieth, uh, at four-thirty, to, uh, avoid the eight percent penalty and one percent interest. So we are still in the grace period, so hopefully I'll have better news to report to you in June. That's it for me, Michael.
Do you have a quick question, Phil, sorry?
Sure.
Um, are the pool repairs underway?
I think Mike's gonna cover that in other topics.
Fine. Moving along, perfect, perfect, thank you. Seeing your vote... It was the other one was, was related.
What's that, related?
It was related, yeah.
The senior citizen council, I'd like to change the name because we want to... Do it differently to Citizens Advisory Council. Does anybody have any problem with that? So we'll change it on the next agenda. Uh, partnership is getting, still in the process of getting the garden club going, uh, but they will be releasing that as soon as they, uh, see that it's well underway. Rennie, any other comments on that?
They're already working, Mike.
They already started the park.
They've done two, two days on the parks.
They were gonna do yesterday and, and part today, so that's, uh, but...
Along with the garden, about the community garden, we, I've talked to Northland, and they're fine with us using that again. So there's sixteen plots that are available, four of them kind of got so overgrown, we stopped trying to deal with them. There are availability of twenty, but sixteen are available, and I think eight are already accounted for. They're free, they're twenty-by-twenty plots.
Can you put something out on front porch for them?
I was waiting to see who had used it in the past, to come back to me and say that they wanted their plots again before I opened it up, but there's six or seven plots that are, that haven't been accounted for, so I'm gonna...
You're gonna be the go-to person?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna have a plot this year, but I'm gonna...
No, no, and, and, and taking that on is fantastic, I mean, it's, Mr. Don Peabody used to do it, and, uh, he...
But for the garden club, I did go in and talk to Amy, and she's letting the garden club people in case they have, you know, rather than just doing a little gardening, if they don't have their own...
Space.
Space, they could take one for a lens.
Super, thank you, any other on, on that line? If not, uh, transportation summit went well, uh, good discussion, uh, good turnout from a lot of people from around this county, uh, not, not a lot of local. I wanna thank Lynn and Rennie, uh, for their support, giving, or supplying some refreshments in the, the library. Uh, they did a, a fantastic job hosting. Uh, you, any more that you wanna add? I mean, there was a lot of discussion about a whole issue of different means of transportation, and, and the guy from Local Motion, uh, is supposed to be getting in touch with me.
No, other, other than, it, it was good to have those people come to Vergens, and the discussion was very good, and there were some really good speakers, and gave a lot of good information to everyone, so...
Even though I introduced Spencer, uh, Putnam as Spencer Norton. And I said, oh, wait a minute, that's Spence Button, I'm not, okay, I, I, rough day. So, but, I felt like, you know, when they awarded their Miss America contest to the wrong person, I was like, oh shit, ughs. Uh, Memorial Day Parade, Mayor, Memorial Day Parade, biggest one in the state of Vermont, as everybody knows. American Legion Pulse fourteen spends well over eleven thousand dollars to put the parade on. Big taking on of, of, of the event. So, those that can, please support them by trying to go down to their barbecue, if you haven't already got your meal planned, appreciate that. As well as other organizations within the city, Rotary, Lions, I'm probably not naming them all, and I apologize if I didn't name you, but they play active roles, excuse me, they play very active roles in this community in its success, as well as the partnership, uh, is, is, and, uh, they're gonna have a meeting, and I've been invited to be a guest speaker, but I gotta talk to Rennie, what my script is. So, a- again, local support, um, is, is really needed, and I ask that everybody do their part, um, both on the council and those at home. We did mail out, uh, came, came up with a relatively inexpensive way to mail these out. We're finding that we did miss a bunch of people in town, um, out Green Street, out certain parts of Pan, in the trailer park, didn't get them. So, um, not sure on the next phase, the next, uh, uh, voice won't be going out until, uh, August. Um, and so, I, I think Judy's already got it full, as far as her plans of what's, what's gonna go in there. So, yes, you will have an article, I will have an article. So, if, if somebody's thinking they wanna put something in, in the city voice, um, please contact me or my wife, and we'll see what we can do, because we, it's cost us about eighteen cents a copy to get it mailed. So, from three hundred and some odd dollars mailing, we got it down to under two. So, and if there is anybody that wouldn't mind putting a few of these in their place of business, I dropped a few off at Kennedy Brothers and another location today, and so that if somebody comes in and just sees it, wants to take it, uh, we really would appreciate it. It's all about information about Vergens, and we would like to get that out and about. Any other comments, Rennie, on the vo- our city voice?
Hi, Gerald, is that Rennie asking any questions?
Good, good, that's what it's all about. Um... Told you about the tea party. Uh, pool, first off, you could probably address this better than I can, but many thanks goes to Mark, uh, providing a lot of labor down there, making...
He's not done yet.
No. I'm in the demo of my face right now.
Okay.
Actually fix it.
But Mark's doing a lot at the pool, a, a lot of stuff is happening. I got an email today from a gentleman asking what was happening. Uh, they're trying to set up a meeting for either Thursday or Friday morning, Thursday, Friday morning doesn't work for me, so that we can figure out where we are, and I invited him, but copied you, uh, to that meeting, so that, um, hopefully we can figure out what we're missing, and pull together some more resources either to help you, uh, but in no way hinder what you're, you're accomplishing, so...
Like, I called that meeting.
Oh, yes, excuse me, Rennie did call it, and, uh, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
And then it was a limited number of folks, only because I think it's the folks that are more closely involved with things that are happening at the pool right now. And the reason that I did it is because I did go down to the pool today, it's the first time, believe it all these years, that I've ever seen that pool empty. And, and it was sobering seeing it empty. So I felt we needed to have a meeting to discuss where we're going with the pool, um, because it needs some work.
Do you want a rundown of what's going on? I could tell you what I'm doing with it, and what I've been talking with the swim team parents.
I think the important thing is when will the pool be filled and opening?
When will the materials arrive? That's, I mean, that's, that's where it is, and then you had told me that Jim had ordered them last Monday, and I've heard through the grapevine he didn't order them till Friday. So, I don't know when they've been ordered, I, I don't know where we are in the process of where the, the cement and the caulk are. So once they arrive, we can have the patching done probably within a day. It'll probably take about a six-hour day to get all the patching in. From what I've understand of the product, it's a twenty-four hour cure, and you fill the pool.
Wow.
So it's not that hard, I've taken out most of the damaged parts, I'm gonna take an angle grinder and make it a little sharper edges, so it's not all crumbly, but I was trying to figure out where all the broken bits were, and so a sledgehammer and a chisel have been whacking it all away. And I need to call the company that makes the caulk and see whether or not they recommend cutting a line underneath the gutter, so that the caulk can have easy access, or whether they say just kinda go right over it. So that might add an hour of time just grinding right along. All the work within the gutters and on the deck itself can happen as the pool is filling and balancing, so that's not as much...
Talking about the stencils, the...
The stencils and filling in the, the, the caulk in the cracks and cleaning out the gutters, because I pulled a couple of the gutter tops up, and it's just full of algae. I have gotten, I pulled the first two out, made about fifteen cents, so I figure if we go all the way around, I mean, we got a couple three bucks that are, are sitting in the gutters, so it's, I will offset the cost of this.
Thank you for doing that, that's great, Mark.
My concern, one of my concerns is, is, is whether or not enough material has been ordered, that's my, that's my concern.
Yeah, I told Mel I, I popped thirteen holes in the, in the bottom today, some of them are only yay big, so it's not gonna be that much, but some of them are substantial. And yeah, once you start looking for them, it's like, oh, there's one.
Any other questions as far as pool related?
That's great, Mark.
I, I know the urgency is, is there to get it full, I know that, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna be ready, I know that the, some of the school kids used it, uh, for some sort of...
Well, it's part of their, it's, it is part of their phys ed program, um, you know, but, but...
And it's just a matter of, it really is a matter of when the material comes in. We can have the inside of that pool, I think, prepped probably within the next day or two. We can have the inside of that pool, I think, prepped probably within the next day or two, and then it's just a matter of, as soon as the stuff comes in, we put it in, and it's.
Jim thought that the, that the materials were gonna arrive either today or tomorrow.
Okay, well.
But I, but, you know.
I just heard like fourth-hand person that it hadn't gotten ordered until, so, when it gets here, we're, and the swim team is on notice, they've been saying, what do you want me to do, and a lot of times I'm like, I don't want too many fingers around the angle grinder.
Well, as long as you've got enough staff to do what you need to do.
As soon as I can tell Michelle and Lisa, I need five people tomorrow, and they'll have five people there, so I'm not worried about that.
Okay, good. All right, we received a note from the family of Merle Jackman acknowledging with grateful appreciation the kindness of our expression, of our sympathy, we sent a bouquet of flowers for her funeral. There's more to be said, I probably couldn't do it without tearing up, so I will let you people take just two seconds and, and see this after, it's signed by all the girls. You've seen this on TV. People are trying to raise money to transform the lives of children, both in the US and internationally, so if you would, please take these as a gift and wear them on Thursday, Red Nose Day.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
I golf on Thursdays.
If you aren't having a good day, you could put that on. I'd ask for an adjournment, motion.
Big motion for adjournment.
And a second?
Second.
Rennie second it, I'll, I'll, so move, I'll just call it.
Steve, give her one.
Yeah, she got one.
Okay.
I even bought my wife one.
My grandkids will get a kick out of this, that's.